Broadcasting live from the Governor Livingston High School television studios in Berkeley Heights, New Jersey, this is Candidates for Township Committee Debate 2013. Here's your host, Nicholas Chiavvo.
Hello and welcome to a Berkeley Heights Communications Committee Election Special, 2013 Berkeley Heights Township Council Election Debate. This year, the Berkeley Heights residents will elect two Township Council members whom will serve from January 1, 2014 through December 31, 2016. Today, we interview the candidates for the Township Council: Edward Delia, the Republican candidate; Thomas Perron, another Republican candidate; and Stephen Yellen, the Democratic candidate. My name is Nicholas Chiavvo, a Berkeley Heights resident and the Berkeley Heights Communications Committee Chairperson, and I am the moderator for tonight's debate. I am joined by Barbara Rybald of Independent Press and Bobby Peer of the AlternativePress.com. This special is being aired on Comcast 34 and Verizon FiOS Channel 47. This debate is being filmed live on Thursday, October 17, at the TV studio in Governor Livingston High School. Prior to today, we met with the candidates to discuss the ground rules and the topics. They were not provided with the questions. For the next hour, we will ask the candidates to provide their viewpoint on various topics that are of significance to this township candidates. Before we begin our first topic, we ask the candidates to please summarize your background, political, professional, and personal for our viewers. We will start with Stephen Yellen.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you to Barbara and to Bobby for being our questioners tonight and to Governor Livingston for filming this debate. My family came to Berkeley Heights a few years before I was born for the same reason many of you have: to be part of a great suburban community, to be a part of our great public schools, schools that I was proud to graduate from. It's a community I've been born and raised in and that I'm looking to serve you as a Township Councilman to help give back to. I have my graduate degree in Communications from Rutgers University. It's an area I care a great deal about and something I can think I can put to good use for the benefit of our town. I've been active for the last six years in our township, including attending Township Council meetings and budget meetings, and also serving as a volunteer on the Township Communications Committee and on the Berkeley Heights Historical Society. But most recently, I was proud of my role as chairman of the Stop the BAC Political Action Committee that was formed to help residents vote no on the May 7 referendum on the Berkeley Aquatic Center proposal for Berkeley Heights. This proposal, which was rejected by the mayor, council, and by 80 percent of the residents of our town, was a misguided idea to put a 51,000-square-foot private swim club next to people's private homes and residences on Emerson Lane. It was something that was not in the best interests of our town, as Mr. Perron himself has pointed out. Everyone felt that way, with the exception of Mr. Delia. He voted yes for the BAC proposal twice as a Township Councilman, and then again urging people to vote yes on that referendum. The fact of the matter is that we, as residents, deserve elected officials who will exercise not only sound leadership but common sense, a desire to work for the best interests of our community, and that is something I believe I bring to the table. We'll talk about a lot of good issues tonight, issues such as the necessity for whether it's our downtown infrastructure or fiscal responsibility, or how we can help make lives better for the people of Berkeley Heights. It's something I pledge to do for you as a Councilman. The only promise I'll make is that I will do the best I can for all that I can. Thank you for watching tonight.
We'll now move on to Ed Delia.
Good evening. I'm Ed Delia. I'm running for reelection for my second term, three years on the Township Council. I've been a resident of Berkeley Heights for over 50 years, my family almost 120. I care deeply about the past, present, and future of Berkeley Heights and its residents. I know I'm not your typical politician. I consider that an asset. I look at every issue from all directions while researching each extensively. The result is what I feel is best for Berkeley Heights. When I first started on the council three years ago, I began walking the streams and Besake River. I spearheaded the need for clearing and de-snagging these waterways, which will help mitigate the flooding problem. No one has looked at this issue in over 30 years. I am also the council's liaison to the Environmental Commission and a member. Last year, we obtained Silver Certification from ANJAC. Only 11 communities had achieved this at that point. Berkeley Heights, because of this status, it helps the town get additional grants to fund projects in town which will save taxpayers money. This year, we are working to start a community garden in town. This is another project which is getting a strong reception. My goal on this one is zero cost to the township. I've been working to address inefficiencies in several of our departments to maximize their effectiveness while also minimizing their costs. Some call me a fiscal watchdog. Look, it's our money. I don't want to waste it. I am looking forward to the next three years as your Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. And Tom?
Good evening. I'm Tom Perron, and I've served on the council for four years. I've served on the planning board for four years. I've served in the Office of Emergency Management for two years and on the Board of Health for two years. I understand the inner workings of town government, and I'm going to talk tonight about the issues in that context. Before I joined the council, I had experience as managing people, managing budgets, and managing contracts. All of this experience I found invaluable to serve on the council. The challenger, Stephen Yellen, doesn't have any of that experience either on or off the council. In the years that I've spent on the council, the spending increases year to year, year over year, for the four years that I've been on have been the lowest of any four-year period within the last decade and a half, and yet, we've maintained services. The police force is strong, emergency services are prompt, and their equipment is now state-of-the-art. Our shared spaces, our roads, our streams, our parks, everything is maintained, even though we've kept the taxes that low. I've replaced those who have misappropriated or misallocated your tax dollars. I've led rewriting the master plan, which focuses on our downtown redevelopment, and this year, there's more construction downtown than there's been in the last decade and a half. I look forward to the opportunity to serve you for the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Let's go to Bobby Peer of the Alternative Press, who will ask our first question, which relates to the land swap.
And my question is going to Tom, who will be the first to respond. Can you tell me your views of the land swap between the township and Little Flower Church involving the upper church, the rectory, the parish center, and their 26 acres of land at 110 Roosevelt Avenue for the Berkeley Heights library and their three acres of land next to the Little Flower Church on Plainfield Avenue?
Sure. If the town government property near the train station is replaced by additional downtown businesses, it'll result in a more robust downtown. For the right to redevelop the downtown property where the government buildings are right now with downtown businesses, that'll generate revenue to the town. They will take on refurbishing the rectory and the Little Flower School to be a new government complex that's up to snuff, okay? And then, I should point out that this has been done before. The new Providence Township has a repurposed building, which wasn't originally their town government facility, and the same thing is true of Long Hill Township. I should point out that the church has a deed restriction that forces the school to actually have schooling in it, but, you know, any court of law would ensure that if that went back to the town, that they had to be adequately compensated for the buildings that they've put up and the improvements to the property that they've made. So while both Little Flower and the town have both gone out for appraisals for their property, for the land swap, price negotiations are ongoing right now. We haven't yet started the process of deciding exactly what would be allowed to be built on the downtown property where the government buildings are now. The price negotiations and what would be allowed to be put downtown, all of those things will depend, will wind up driving whether or not it's in the benefit of all the residents of the township. In addition to those things, you have to consider the long-term cost of maintenance. So if we wind up looking at all of that and find out that the long-term maintenance costs are in line or lower, that we get a more robust downtown with revenue-generating businesses that will defray the cost of running the town and the schools from the existing homeowners, it'll be in the best interest of the township, and in that case, I would be voting in favor of it. But we'll see.
Thank you, Tom. We'll then move on to Ed.
It's actually Steve.
Hey, Steve, go ahead. That's fine. Before I go into it, I want to acknowledge to Tom that, yes, you're right. I don't have your experience of raising taxes during your four years on the council. I happen to think that that's a compliment to me. Now, inasmuch as we're talking about the land swap, let's go into detail about what this is and why it needs to be done. I firmly agree, in this case, with Mr. Perron and not with Mr. Delia that this should be done and that we can benefit as a town, both in the medium range and in the long range especially, not just fiscally, but for the well-being of our community. Let's talk about the situation right now. Our police station is wedged into Town Hall, a building that goes back to the 1950s. Our emergency dispatch, something that has done to help save people's lives, is in a trailer at the back of that Town Hall. In addition, we have a library that is crowded and cluttered and has had constant needs of repairs for its air conditioning and heating. But finally, we have a situation where our senior citizens, people who we should be helping the most we can in their golden age of life, they have to pay rent through us, through the township, to a private facility just to have a once-a-week meeting. Now, this proposal with the Little Flower Church, as Tom said, would involve the kind of property, the kind of area that we could help build a new town center, police station, senior center, library, all the facilities that are needed for the kind of quality of life we want in a suburb like ours. Now, compare this to what Mr. Delia has proposed, at least in the Legal Women Voters questionnaire released this morning. He suggested that we, instead of moving the Town Hall property and setting up a whole new thing on Roosevelt Avenue, that we take the library that is currently in its curbside and put it right next to Town Hall to create a larger Town Hall library complex. Anyone who's been there knows that there's no room to build another large building next to Town Hall, unless he's in favor of getting rid of all the commuter parking that already exists there. We need to have sound, common-sense leadership in terms of dealing with issues like these. Mr. Perron is right. There are a lot of questions that have to be resolved fiscally, but I happen to believe this is something we, as a community, ought to look at. It's like making an investment. In the short term, you will pay a little bit more, but you do it because you believe there's a long-term benefit far greater than that than when you're involved. So it is here. Yes, we would pay some more income in taxes to make this possible. In the long run, between the possible sale of the Town Hall property and the overall health of our community, we would all be better off financially and in the kind of diverse, vibrant community that you, like me, enjoy in being part of each and every day. If we stay where we are now, the situation will remain the same. Our taxes will go up, but without any improvement in the quality of our lives.
Thank you.
Hey, Ed.
Thank you. First of all, when I wrote that, I was specific and said I want to look into the possibility of building on the downtown property. I didn't say I want to build there. I want to look at all possibilities to see what works best for Berkeley Heights. It would be a foolish thing to just say, "This is the right way to go," and not look into any other options. A good example is when we did our dispatch in downtown. We looked at all the options, we saw what was best, and then we went with it. That was a very sound, practical way to address an issue, and I want to do the same with this: look into all options, see what works best. I looked the property over. I've seen general plans or general ideas, and much of it does fit into our scheme. But there are a lot more things that have to be asked and answered. So, and I did campaign three years ago for a new municipal complex. There is absolutely a need. Everybody knows it. But I also want to do what's right and the most practical and reasonable in cost. There are many factors in this that have to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We will now move on to our second topic, and we'll turn it over to Barbara Rybald of Independent Press, and the topic is the township's long-term infrastructure.
Great, thank you. Roads, sidewalks, sewers, sewer plants, curbing, it's all, even the buildings, they're all part of the township's long-term infrastructure. How would you prioritize the maintenance and repair of these items? And once you prioritize that, how would you pay for it? And I guess the first person on this is Ed.
Thank you. First of all, since being on the council, we have been implementing a six-year rolling capital plan, which means we look five years into the future, and then you count the year that we're working on. And each year, we put what's most important and what might be important in year 2014, 2015, and so on, and it is working fantastic, and you adjust things as you go, but it is something that has not been implemented, and now we are in a catch-up mode on this. But in another year or two, we will be in perfect position to address some of the things that have never been done. We have been getting more roads paved now, which hadn't been done in years. If everybody notices, Park Avenue just got finished, and that was also with two $250,000 grants that we see that we didn't have to spend money on. That helped us to defray the cost, and that's why it did have to get done in two separate half and half, but it was worth the wait. Our police cars, we are catching up on the police cars because they hadn't been replaced in several years. With our capital plan, that's being addressed. And with our capital plan, the intent is it's not a wish list, it's a needs list, and that's where I come into play. I go over everything and make sure what is right is what we get, not what somebody wants, and it's working good. Thank you.
Tom?
The yearly budget has two components: the operational component and the capital expenses component. Capital is, like we've been told, is anything that has a useful life of five years or more. So the capital expenses are our infrastructure. They're our roads, our parks, our vehicles, our sewer plant equipment, just like your house, your driveway, your snow blower, your car. They don't last forever, and if they don't have proper maintenance, they deteriorate a lot faster. We put ourselves, like Ed said, on a six-year rolling plan where we've examined the condition of all of the equipment. We've projected the cost of all maintenance and replacement of all of this stuff, and then we spread it very evenly across a six-year period, because nobody wants to get a big gotcha for a tax bill because somebody didn't plan properly. This is the first time this has been done. This current council is the first council that has ever done this in Berkeley Heights. So how do we do it? Each year, we take a small portion and we make a down payment on that year's expenses that we're going to buy as capital, and the rest, we bond over a large number of years. And you say, "Well, wouldn't that increase the town's debt?" And the answer is no, because every year, we have debt rolling off. So we're keeping the debt even across year over year because nobody wants to get a gotcha with a tax bill. Nobody wants to get stuck if the town didn't plan for a roof repair or a motor at the sewer plant, so that's what we've been doing. And every year, we revisit that plan. I think spending more than we currently do would also be fiscally irresponsible. We have to hold the line on taxes.
Steve?
So I think that one of the priorities that have to be at the top of any governing body's list, Barbara, is the maintenance of our roads. Park Avenue is repaired. That's great. There are far too many other roads in this town that are littered with potholes. You go to most residential neighborhoods, there are no roads, pretty much no roads, where you don't encounter some sort of cracked pavement, whether it's on the sidewalk or in the street. Now, this isn't just a matter of public safety. It affects our property values. When you have a neighborhood that looks like it is in sadder condition than other parts, it affects the value of the home you live in. So it is a taxpayer matter for this township to be willing to spend the money it takes to fix our roads in the long term. So to answer your question, Barbara, I do think our DPW deserves to have the resources it needs to speed up the process of fixing our roads. In fact, the budget for the other expenses for the DPW has been flat for the last three years. So even though the DPW could, with more resources, tackle the issue more quickly, they haven't done so. So inasmuch as there is an ability for us to do more to help our residents, and if we explain to our residents, going out into the public and explaining why we are spending money to clear up our roads, I think that is a tax increase people are willing to have. The quality of life that matters in this community is whether or not we want to have a community we can afford to be a part of and whether it is worth being a part of. Now, in regards to your question about the sewer, the portion of your question about the sewer facility, a few years ago, there was an idea that came to my attention about whether or not you could use something that's called a methane generator at the sewer plant that would convert the methane gas that comes out of it into electricity. Now, this is something that would take a small amount of investment to make, but on the other hand, if you don't invest in something, you won't get the long-term benefit that comes out of it. And so when you have something like that, you'd be able to generate electricity that could not only provide cost savings for the township, but potentially revenue for the township if we're able to sell that electricity to others or back to the grid. So I think this is a critical difference between myself and the current governing body. I disagree with Mr. Perron's assessment. Yes, we, as citizens, don't like paying taxes, but we especially don't like it when we don't know what we're paying for. And I think that's a fundamental problem, that when people see their tax bills, they don't know what they're getting from it. When people see that their bulk pickup is suddenly not available, or they see the quality of their roads that are, in many cases, still not repaired after years, they have to wonder, "What are we really getting our money worth for?" My philosophy as a Councilman is this: if we can be honest and forthright in explaining to our residents why we wish to spend something and give them the honest truth with the details as to why we think it's in the best interest of this town, we should. If we're worried about losing reelection because we're going to increase taxes, then we're in the wrong walk of life. Being in public office means doing the right thing, regardless of whether you get reelected or not, and that's a philosophy I would hold to in office.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next and third topic, is Township's Fiscal Responsibility.
And this is directed to Steve first. Being fiscally responsible, it's a very hot topic every year and more so these past few weeks. Can you tell us your ideas of how the legislature can respond to how they should be more fiscally responsible?
You mean the state legislature?
No, more the township.
Oh, the council, sure. So I think that in terms of what a town can do to be more fiscally responsible, there are several things I can point to as to how not to go about doing that. First of all, let's take a look at what happened earlier this year. For whatever reason, our town administrator was fired without warning. Now, because it was without cause, we, as a township, forked over $30,000 to pay for her three-month salary. The mayor, a Republican, Joe Bruno, said this wasn't something we ought to have done as a township, but the council went ahead with it anyway. I wasn't on there. I can't tell you the reasons, but it seems to me that when a mayor who was present when the last administrator was fired and again cost us three months' pay, or $27,000, that he would have a good idea of what's frivolous and what isn't. I would also say that not being fiscally responsible is voting to reject every single tax settlement we, as a township, have to make. Now, Mr. Delia, over the last three years, has voted 12 times, the only one on the council to do this, I might add, against one commercial tax appeal after another. These are situations where the town doesn't have a legal leg to stand on. It's why the mayor and the others on the council agree to those settlements. The tariffs is already out of the barn from a few years ago, so we have to pay them. But if Mr. Delia had his way, we would have fought all 12 of those in court, lost all 12 of them, and had to pay a lot more in taxes to make up for the legal costs. I think when you talk about fiscal responsibility, then, it's important to say what you wouldn't do as much as you would. Here's the rest of what you need to know about my philosophy on fiscal responsibility. It means that, yes, you have to look carefully at the budget, and in fact, I have gone to the Township Budget Meetings, and I have a pretty good idea, being one of four who was in the meeting, other than the council members, what goes into crafting the budget. This is something that, as a group of six, each individual can contribute a bit to. But I also think fiscal responsibility does not exclude compassion and caring for those who are less well-off. Our senior citizens, for example, have routinely petitioned the council to have a higher quality for a bus to take them to places and for basic small stipends for their quality of life. We're talking about, at most, $1,000 here, $1,000 there, things that really do matter for the seniors but are a pittance to the township. In fact, the township currently will not even let seniors go to the Township Council meetings as they used to on a bus because they have to pay the bus driver overtime. Now, to me, I think that's problematic. Fiscal responsibility is important to help make sure our quality of life is there, but frankly, to quote Franklin Roosevelt, "I'd rather not have a deficit in the book of human compassion." And I think that is something we, as a council, also have to reconcile in terms of our desire to help our community and help our long-term financial health as well.
Thank you. Ed?
First of all, to address the tax appeal issue, I have voted no on all tax appeals for a simple reason: the money has to go somewhere, so guess where it comes out of? Somebody else's pocket. If you were a tax-paying citizen, you would understand that your taxes could be going to pay somebody else who, let's say, if I went and got a tax appeal, you could be helping to pay my taxes, because the money just doesn't disappear. And all values on all properties go up and down. When the value of the property goes up, we don't charge more for that. We still charge the same because it's on a percentage basis. For the rest of the issue on fiscal responsibility, I look at the bill list every meet, before every meeting. I go through it. I search it. I've learned a lot of things on how to save money. One of the things by going through, I put in a place of new procedure on how to purchase items, which is saving the town money. Fuel monitoring, by my doing, I've pushed this through, that we needed to monitor our fuel on our vehicles. In time, that will save us money because we can watch all vehicles now, what vehicle is using how much fuel, and that's going to help us. I hope in the future, we get GPSs in our vehicles. That's another issue that will save us money in the long run. We do have to monitor everything in town, and without keeping an eye on everything, the dollar is what makes a difference. Just again, yesterday, I spent two hours in a meeting, working with the administrator and department heads and another councilperson on the capital plan items. We were working to make sure we get the right items for the town so we don't waste money on something that's not necessary. The meeting was super productive, and it will continue, and that's the way I like doing things: researching it, scrutinizing it, and making sure we get the best bang for our buck. Thank you.
Tom?
I think it's interesting that Stephen flip-flopped from one question to the next on taxes. He first came at me and said that he was complaining because there was an increase in taxes at all, right? And then later, just in this last thing, he said, "Well, we could go approach the townspeople and ask them for higher taxes to improve the infrastructure more than it currently is." I think that fiscal responsibility is not spending money you don't have. I mean, you have to make choices sometimes, like one of the things we had to choose was to suspend bulk pickup this year for only one year so that we could address flooding problems for residents, but also, not only does it deteriorate their home values, but it also can deteriorate the roads, okay? So we had to make that choice. We made that choice, and we're addressing a flooding problem that hasn't been looked at in this town in 20 years or more. Fiscal responsibility means doing the analysis. We looked at a tri-town dispatching service, and we realized that it was going to cost us $100,000 a year in operating costs every single year going forward to get into that tri-town program, but so we decided instead to spend the money on our own dispatching equipment to bring it up to state-of-the-art. Fiscal responsibility means searching for the lowest-cost insurance for the township. It means things like finding the most cost-effective animal control contract. It means eliminating the transfer of sick time between employees, which costs the town money, eliminating the illegal practice of using holiday pay in pension calculations. It means, you know, people who leave in the middle of a year from work don't get paid for all of the remaining holidays and all the remaining vacation time that they have. I have replaced the people who have misallocated or misappropriated our tax dollars, and that might be a private matter. We've shown no tolerance for mismanagement of our finances or our audits in town. I have settled tax appeals because I don't want to gamble with our tax dollars, and I don't want to put at jeopardy the financial well-being of the town. Ed and I on the council have done all of these things, and we'll continue with this fiscal responsibility if reelected. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, and we're now going to move on to our next topic, which is the Union County succession. And we're now going to move on to our next topic, which is the Union County succession.
I think everybody pretty much knows that on the ballot, voters are going to see a question: Should we secede? We being Berkeley Heights, secede from Union County. And if you vote yes, then the council will then have an opportunity to talk to the legislature and try to convince them to change the boundaries. Berkeley Heights Council suggests that this would be a good idea, and we should end up with Morris County, and they've done research on this. So I guess I'd like to know what everyone thinks. Are you in favor of this? And if you are, how are you going to talk the legislature into agreeing to the change in counties? And if you aren't in favor of it, why aren't you in favor of it? Tom, you're number one.
Okay. Well, first of all, Union County taxes have been rising faster than town taxes. When I came to town 17 years ago, town taxes were a bigger portion of the property taxes that I paid than the county taxes, and now it's the reverse. The town, council, Ed and I, and the rest have all done our part to keep the property taxes as low as we possibly can. But no matter what we do, we cannot compensate for the mismanagement of the Union County freeholders. The mayors from Berkeley Heights, New Providence, Summit, and councilmembers have all approached the freeholders and pointed out waste in their budgets. And their response to us was, "It's none of our business. If we want to affect the budget, we should run for Union County freeholders." Now, it's my job as a town councilmember to look out for all the residents and to find the best services. We talk about shared services all the time. The best shared service of all would be looking for, and we happen to be lucky because we're in the corner of the county, to just switch the borderlines and become part of Morris County. I mean, the state is the only people that the county listens to. When you point out to them, when the state points out to them, that there was a stay-at-home person, a work-at-home person, that was making $160,000 a year as a county boss and not doing a really good job, and the state points it out, that's when things change. They don't listen to the towns, but they'll listen to the state. So the least that can happen, if we vote to secede, is that the state steps in and has a higher level of scrutiny over the Union County budget. Why are we looking to move? Because Union County doesn't do as good a job of managing its money as Morris County or Somerset County does. I mean, it would be $1,000 to $2,000 a year, every year, savings for anybody who owns a home in Berkeley Heights, depending on the value of their home, just by saying you're part of Morris County. I mean, to Steve Yellen, it's all other people's money. He doesn't pay property taxes. I mean, it's a no-brainer to me.
Let me say, first of all, Mr. Perone.
Steve, it is your turn.
Go ahead, Steve. You're the next candidate.
Let me say, first of all, Tom, that my family pays property taxes just like anyone else. There are a lot of people in this township who pay taxes, who are part of families that pay taxes but are themselves not the breadwinners in the household. And the fact of the matter is, I am perfectly capable of looking at the issues as you have and as others have, to be able to try and do the right thing to the people of this town. The fact of the matter is, just because one can claim to be fiscally responsible, just because one can claim to be fiscally conservative, doesn't mean you're actually accomplishing that. Now, that gets me right to the secession point, because the truth is, Barbara, I'm not voting on that issue because it's a dead end. And here's why: Even if every single resident in this town approved that referendum, the state legislature will never accept it. Eight years ago, Milburn, Livingston, Cedar Grove, and Verona, all in Essex County with Newark, voted on the same day to secede from Essex County to Morris. Guess what? They're still there, because the state legislature never even gave them a vote. And they're not going to be the same for us. Why? Because if any suburban town like ours were allowed to move to a more suburban county, everyone else in their shoes would do the same. It would be a no-brainer, as Mr. Perone told you. But that means that the urban counties left over would go belly-up, and guess who has to bail them out? The taxpayers. So if you want to talk about fiscal responsibility, by all means, Mr. Perone's suggestion would be delightful. Our taxes would go up far more than where we are now. The reality is that we cannot be playing Don Quixote on the taxpayer expense. If they want to go tilted windmills, if they want to give people, you know, silver bullets that in fact could never be shot, I suggest they run for Congress and join the Tea Party, because they're doing a fine job there, proving the impossible is, well, impossible. I believe that the only hard, sensible road that you can take is to try to work with Union County to bring back more of our tax dollars, because we absolutely deserve more of them than we do now. And I think that's something that matters for us and our fiscal responsibility in the long run.
Ed?
First of all, I do approve the thought of trying to secede from the county. I'd say we'd be fools not to try. Just because people say it can't be done, doesn't mean we shouldn't at least try it. Doing nothing will get us nowhere. Next thing is, I'll use three simple things to say how they waste money. $18 million on the Galloping Hill Golf Course wasted. $20 million per year down the drain as a loss to run Reynolds Hospital. We don't even know the cost of giving 580 non-Union employees healthcare for lifetime. Complete waste of money. Next issue is, the county doesn't have a 2% cap. They just raise their taxes, our taxes, when they need more money. That's frightening. Last year, they raised our taxes over $1.1 million. That's what they raised it, not what we pay. We pay, I believe it's somewhere in the area of $15 million. I don't have the exact number. Number three: Many states have eliminated county government altogether because it's a waste. Maybe we can't do that, but we could at least curtail or address this problem because we are throwing money down the drain. The county takes our money and gives it to their voters. They don't give it back to us. I guess, like I said before, doing nothing is not going to fix the problem. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So now, we're going to move on to our last topic, and that is the Berkeley Heights senior citizens' quality of life. And we'll turn it over to Bobby Pierre.
The senior citizens want a voice, and they want some recognition as to where they want a place to meet and have more quality of life in Berkeley Heights. And I just want to hear from each of you how you can improve the senior citizens' quality of life going forward. And the first person to speak will be Steve.
So, this is an issue that matters a very great deal to me, because I was very close to my grandmother as I was growing up. And she, like many who came to this country as immigrants, she taught me and instilled in me values in terms of hard work and compassion and care. And when I see what goes on in our township, and especially in terms of the concerns of our seniors, I feel there's a lot more we can do to help them in their quality of life. As I said earlier, they're not asking for much, and I think we, as a township, ought to be willing to give a little, to be able to help them have a quality of life that they deserve at the golden age of their life. Now, I gave you some good examples of that earlier on, in terms of wanting to be able to go to township council meetings on Tuesday evenings. The driver has to be paid overtime? That's less than $100 at most. I think that's something we, as residents, ought to be willing to do. There are certain things the seniors in our community also feel are important, which is that they want to have councilmembers that will go and listen to them and get their input. This is something I find across this community, that people don't even know who their councilmembers are most of the time, let alone what they're working on. So I think communications is a key part of this. This much I can tell you, that if I'm elected, I will want to have a monthly open office hour essentially, which is something that could be on a weekend afternoon, when people could come to Town Hall, and then they can find out what's going on in town and offer their feedback. I think that's something that is a matter of common sense and representation. I also would like, ideally, to reinvigorate the town's newsletter that could go out to residents, and expand our volunteer email list so that people can also find out electronically what's going on in our town. Senior citizens deserve a township government that will be truly working to do the best they can for them. Now, the fact of the matter is, we, as a community, have to be willing to balance what we would want with what everyone as a whole would benefit from. If we, as citizens, are willing to put up a little more, to help our seniors a great deal more than that, I think we should. This isn't a question of whether or not I'm in favor of less taxes or more taxes. What my comment was to Mr. Perone was that his time on the council raised people's taxes, when people don't even often know what those services are going to. Something like bulk pickup, for example, which was stricken from the agenda this year, no one in town seemed to know about until it was done. And as for bringing it back next year, that would be great if we do, but the fact is, the mayor and the council have been on the record previously as saying they may not want to bring it back. So these are matters, again, about quality of life that we need as a township to embrace. If we are going to be serious about having a quality of life worth having in this town, then we need to be able to spend the money it takes to provide that. I don't think it's a bad thing to be willing to have our citizens pay to have a high quality of life. That's something we, as citizens, should care about, and something I do care about.
Ed?
First of all, just to address miscommunication, the mayor, for several years, had quoted that this may be the last year for cleanup week. That was said for year after year for about three years. This year, we decided to do it because the streams were a crucial thing that had to be taken care of, and we specifically said that it will come back next year. It was a one-year deal. We got the ball rolling on the streams by doing that. Back to the original question, the seniors are the fabric of Berkeley Heights, and I'm not just saying it because I know so many of them. Most of them are my friends' parents. I've known them since I was a little toddler, and they're important to me. It also benefits the town for seniors to stay as long as possible. Every time somebody stays in their house for 50-some-odd years, the town benefits because that house does not have people going to school year after year after year. So I want to keep the seniors in their houses as long as possible because a senior uses the least amount of our tax dollars than anyone else in town. Whether it's my parents or anyone else for that matter that's been here a long time, when you're in the same house 50 to 60 years, you're saving the town money. Thank you.
Tom?
There is a vibrant senior club in Berkeley Heights, and they meet at Mount Carmel. And I'm not going to take any credit for that. That's been in place for many years before I came to the town council. But there's three things that we've done in the last three years, Ed and I, for seniors. Number one is, we got the senior bus to take all the seniors, not just members of the senior club, all the seniors, to shopping and places around town for those that can't drive anymore. That's at the town's expense. Number two is, the housing money that we collect. We have enabled it to be used for repair of somebody on a fixed income, to go for water heaters, a roof repair, things around the house. So that's the second thing that we did. The third thing that we did is, we worked on a YMCA lease for a new building, and they've promised, as part of that lease, to make a lot of things available for our seniors, including a big senior room. So those are three things right there that Ed and I have done while on the council, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Thank you. This time, we would like the candidates to tell the viewers why they should vote for you. We will start the discussion with Tom Perone.
Okay. Tom Perone, I've served on the council for four years, and in that four years, I have a proven track record of serving the residents of Berkeley Heights, protecting the values of their homes, keeping the town a great place to live. One way was, I wrote an ordinance to prevent builders from decreasing the buildable lot size on lots that they don't own, which would encroach on residents' properties. From the first day I got on for my second term, I pushed for more paved train station parking spots, and we now have 35 more paved train station parking spots so people can use public transportation. I've preserved our sewer treatment capacity for the businesses and residents in town against the encroachment from businesses outside of Berkeley Heights. I've stopped the expansion of Exit 43 of 78 by appealing to the Department of Transportation, which would have taken away a lot of the front lawns from people on Diamond Hill Road. I've organized the residents to fight against state bills that would have taken out of local school boards' hands rights and given them to an appointed Union County school superintendent. I've enacted, or was the leader, for a program, which is a state program that we enacted in Berkeley Heights, to give our volunteer firefighters and rescue personnel community college tuition assistance for themselves and their families. Ed and I, with the rest of the council, have set our fiscal house in order, and we've moved up the ranks in Money Magazine's list of best small towns to live in. If you want us to keep doing the same job, vote for Ed and I. On November 5th, return us to the town council. Thank you.
Ed?
Oh, okay. I thought it was Mr. Yellen's turn. I would like to thank the residents for electing me this past three-year term. I am now asking you again to reelect me for a second three-year term, which I am confident I will be able to complete my current projects. I feel I have brought a unique and beneficial insight to the council and the residents. I will continue to work with Tom Perone and the rest of the council on the continuing concerns of the town, including but not limited to all unnecessary spending. The federal, state, and county governments waste enough of our tax money. I won't let the township waste any of yours. As a small business owner, I understand the concerns and issues of our commercial owners in town. As a tax-paying resident, I understand your concerns and problems. On the town budget, my goal is not to stay below the 2% cap, but to achieve a zero or negative increase in your taxes. I've been fiscally responsible and proven it through my actions over these past three years. As a council, we still have a lot to accomplish, but we are constantly making progress to have Berkeley Heights as the best place to live. Money Magazine voted Berkeley Heights the number six best small town in USA. This didn't occur by accident. It occurred by the efforts of Tom, myself, and the current council. I want to thank you for your taking the time to listen to all of us tonight, and please vote for Ed Delia and Tom Perone on November 5th. Thank you.
Let me say, first of all, before I go into my closing address, that the same time that we're now ranked sixth in Monthly Magazine, New Jersey Monthly dropped us from seventh to 84th. Ratings come, ratings go. But the reality in this town is that people's lives, to them, don't seem to be getting better. The taxes keep going up, that our quality of life is either stagnant, or in some cases, as with our seniors, as in bulk pickup, as in many different areas that matter to us, whether it's our infrastructure or our basic ability to move forward as a community, they aren't moving. They aren't getting better. And so my perspective on the council would be one of watchdog. It would be someone who's willing to play devil's advocate in order to help make sure we make the best possible decisions for our town. Mr. Delia has claimed that he is different than the rest of the council. That's only if you think making decisions like he did on the Berkeley Aquatic Center or on tax appeals, as Mr. Perone pointed out, were poor decisions. Making independent decisions isn't the only standard by which one is an effective leader. It matters whether you have sound judgment and good experience and wisdom going into what you're trying to do. The reality is that we, as a town, can do a lot better than where we are now. So if you believe that we are just fine as we are, I'm probably not the person you want to vote for. But if you believe we can have a better Berkeley Heights, if you believe that we can have a quality of life that matters to each and every one of us, whether we can have a budget that makes sure our citizens get the best bang for their buck, whether we can repair our roads and make sure that the contradictions in bulk pickup, is it staying or is it going, that it's staying, whether we're going to be able to have leaders, all of them, that will understand common sense decisions, like voting no to the Berkeley Aquatic Center proposal, or voting yes to tax appeals we don't have a chance of in court. It's a matter of whether we, as citizens, are going to have elected officials who will come to us and understand us, listen to us, and get our concerns and put them into practice. That's all I want to do as a councilman, is to try and do the right thing by this community, to do the best I can for all that I can. If you will give me the honor of serving you on November 5th for a three-year term, I pledge that and only that to you. I'm not going to pledge to cut your taxes, because reality is, no one of us up here can say we have. I won't be able to pledge to get rid of wasteful spending because we don't know what's in there to be wasted or not. But I can tell you this much: What we, as citizens, deserve is better, perhaps, in many areas than we have now. I believe I can help make a positive difference. Now, if you give me your support on November 5th, we can do that together. If you want to know more about me, you can go to my website, www.bhdms.com, or to visit my Facebook page, which is Steven Yellen for Township Council. Thank you for listening to this broadcast. I hope you've gotten a good idea as to who to vote for on November 5th. I hope you've gotten a good idea as to who to vote for on November 5th, and I humbly ask for your support to help move this community forward. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, candidates. This type of show takes many hands to make it successful. The Communications Committee, we'd like to thank those people behind the scenes. Joe Voorhees, who is the Director of Television Production at Governor Livingston High School, Ken Stiefel, and the Governor Livingston Communication Students in the studio today. The alternative press, independent press, our candidates, and the community. Please continue to watch this TV station throughout the year for ongoing sports coverage, Berkeley Heights education events, This Week in Berkeley Heights, which is a weekly news show, Cup of Joe with Joe, show in which the mayor discusses the latest topics of importance, the Highlander Marching Band, which occurred this weekend, graduation ceremonies, and other topics of interest to the community. Also, please visit the township's website, www.berkleyhighttwp.com for township information. Remember, Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th, and the polls are open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Good night, everyone.